Okay, it's now five o'clock. And I'm going to call the meeting to order. So we are at B, which is roll call. Trustee Briscoe is absent. Trustee Singer here. Trustee Souters.
Here.
Trustee Westwell.
Here.
And I am President Gina Clayton Tarvin, and I am here. We're now at C, Agenda Adoption. For the Regular Board of Trustees Meeting of December 15, 2020, is before us for action. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
One second.
Okay, any discussion? Trustee Singer.
None.
Trustee Souters.
None.
Trustee Westwell.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
First of all, I'd like to pull item N8.
Let me get to that.
Before we wrote on the adoption of the agenda, I'd like to correct typographical on H2.
Okay.
Meeting date was actually December 3.
Okay. All right, I'm going to fix that. You are correct. Thank you for that correction. Trustee Westwell, I appreciate that. So at H2, it should be Special Board of Trustees Meeting of December 3, 2020. It was a Thursday, and it was a special board meeting. So thank you, trustee. And you also wanted to pull an eight. I am going to move an eight to just before old business, which there isn't any. So just before new business. N8 will be moved to just before new business, and it will be handled as a separate and distinct motion. Anything else, trustee? Thank you. So we've heard the discussion. And we have a correction and also a movement of the N8, which is part of the consent calendar. So trustee Westwell has taken N8 off of the consent calendar and asked for it to be an actual item that would be discussed because typically, under California Government Code and the Brown Act, anything in the consent calendar is not discussable. Like, we would not discuss it. So now that it's been pulled, it can be discussed. Okay. We're going to go to the vote. Trustee Singer.
Aye.
Trustee Souters.
Aye.
Trustee Westwell.
Voting aye with pulling N8 out of there.
Yes, that's accurate. And I'm a yes. Therefore, it passes four. Oh, it's unanimous, and trustee Briscoe is absent. Okay. We are now at D, which is closed session. And I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to trustee Souters, our clerk of the board.
Thank you. D, closed session. The public is invited to comment on the identified items listed during a closed session prior to adjournment to closed session. Comments shall be limited to three minutes each. In order to address the Board of Trustees, members of the public may choose to, one, complete the online comment card at www.ovsd.org/comment no later than 3:00 PM for comments regarding closed session agenda items. Or two, wait outside the boardroom with the dress listed at the top of the agenda at 4:45 PM, following social distance markings and wearing a mask until you are invited into the boardroom to make your public comment regarding closed session items. D1, Government Code. Tonight, we have two things on the agenda. D1, Government Code, Section 54956.9. D2, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation to Potential Cases. And D2, Government Code, Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Agency Designated Representative Felix Avila, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources, Employee Organization, CSEA, and OBT.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comments for closed session items?
That is a great question. Hmm, no.
Okay.
Not that I have in my possession anyways.
Okay, and I don't have any either. So we are going to go to closed session. And we are going to go into closed session at 5:04.
Okay, it is now six o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting back to order. So we are at letter E in the agenda. We are returning to open session and reporting of any closed session action. Mr. Clerk, is there anything to report?
There is one thing to report. The following action was taken in closed session. A motion by trustee Singer and seconded by trustee Souters and carried by the following roll call vote to approve the multi-year settlement agreement to resolve special education potential litigation in the amount of eighty-three thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents was as follows. Clayton Tarvin, aye. Singer, aye. Souters, aye. Westwell, aye. And Briscoe was absent at that time.
Okay, and I should note that trustee Briscoe is present. He arrived at five twenty. Okay, so next on the agenda is F. It's the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise to join us in the pledge.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we are at the portion of the meeting called G introductions and I'm going to introduce a couple of guests that we have this evening. And I am looking in the list. I'm not sure our first guest is here yet, but I am going to-
He's there.
He's there. Okay, so we're at G one. We have a guest from the U.S., United States, House of Representatives for California District forty-eight. It's Congressman Harley Ruda. Congressman Ruda, are you here? Uh-oh, we can't hear him. Hold on, Congressman. I think you're muted.
I'm unmuted now and it's great to be with you and all of you on this historic moment. It's the job you do is so important for our country. I've said it often, if we are going to be the, continue to be the strongest country in the world, we have to have the best educated kids in the world. And that's what all of you do every day is to ensure that we do the best job we can towards that end. And for all of us, we're grateful for your service.
Thank you, Congressman. We will be coming back to you shortly so that you could administer the oath of office to trustee Westwell and myself. We'll come right back to you. Okay, we're now at G two. Huntington Beach Police Department interim police chief Julian Harvey. Chief Harvey, come on up. So Board of Trustees, I asked interim chief Harvey to address the Board of Trustees this evening and kind of give a little bit of information about himself and just that, you know, couple minutes report about what's going on at the city of Huntington Beach. Chief Harvey, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm, I'm going to spend very little time talking about myself, but I wanted to say good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Ocean View School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. Thank you for your service to your community. These challenging times highlight the critical importance that civic positions held by people like yourselves, how important those roles are. Congressman Ruda said it best, there really is no more important role in our community than the education of our children. So for that, we are grateful. Now, more than ever, it's the thoughtful and careful decision-making from individuals like yourselves and people in positions of authority and in elected positions throughout the region. Now, more than ever, those, the importance of those decisions are, have never been in more stark relief. On behalf of the men and women of the Huntington Beach Police Department, thank you for your partnership. We cannot deliver the highest level of service that we demand of ourselves without the critical involvement of the institutions in the city, namely in our schools and our school districts. I am a product of Huntington Beach schools and wanted to extend my gratitude to the educators and professionals in the Ocean View School District, to the other districts in the area, in the city, and beyond. As I said, there is no more important work. I had the luxury of reading the finest police agency in the state and an incredibly supportive and vibrant community. I just wanted to stop by and say thank you. Keep your chins up. We're getting closer each day to the sounds of laughter and play at every school in this city and throughout the region. But that again, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Chief Harvey. We appreciate you coming out tonight and addressing us. Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Okay, we're now- Get re-situated here and fix the screen. Okay, we're now at H one. This is the, the minutes. So, regular Board of Trustees meeting of November seventeen, two thousand twenty. The minutes are before us for approval. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on these minutes? Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Trustee Singer?
None.
Trustee Souters?
None.
Trustee Westwell? And I have none. Therefore, we go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Trustee Singer?
Aye.
Trustee Souters?
Aye.
And trustee Westwell? And I am a yes. Therefore, it passes five oh. It's unanimous. We are now at H two, Special Board of Trustees meeting, and it's actually for December third, two thousand twenty. I would like to thank my colleague trustee Westwell for bringing to our attention that there was a typo. It had said the fifth, but it was actually the third, which was a Thursday. So is there a motion to approve as corrected?
Second.
Okay, trustee Briscoe, any discussion?
None.
Trustee Singer?
None.
Trustee Souters?
None.
Trustee Westwell? And I have none. Therefore, we go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Trustee Singer?
Aye.
Trustee Souters?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell? And I'm a yes. Therefore, it passes unanimously. It's five oh. We're now at I, time certain. This is I one. At six oh five P M. It's actually six oh six, so we're just a minute off. It's the oath of office. So the registrar voters of Orange County has provided the certificate of appointment in lieu of election for unopposed candidates for the November third, two thousand twenty general election. Congressman Harley Ruda, member of the U.S. House of Representatives, California District forty-eight, will ceremoniously administer the oath of office to Ms. Gina Clayton Tarvin, that's me, and my colleague, Mr. Norm Westwell. So we're going to go back to our congressman, but before we do that, I just want to say that our congressman is actually being zoomed in or piped in from Washington, D.C. He's there doing important work, went back today to be able to participate in any potential votes that could give the American public relief. So, Mr. Congressman, you have the floor. You're recognized. I think you're still muted. Hold on one moment.
Okay, the host has unmuted me. Thank you, President Gina Clayton Tarvin. And let me start with trustee Norm Westwell. Norm, if you will repeat after me, I state your name, do solemnly swear-
I, Norm Westwell, do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith, faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
I will well faithfully discharge-
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, trustee Westwell.
Thank you.
And next, I'll turn my attention to trustee Gina Clayton Tarvin. Gina, if you will repeat after me, I state your name, do solemnly swear-
I, Gina Clayton Tarvin, do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Congressman. Thank you so much for being here with us this evening. We know that you're doing the work of the district and of California forty-eight and for the entire nation. So we are so grateful to you and thank you again. Hope to see you soon.
Thank you. Hopefully, we'll get a bill passed on COVID-nineteen relief while we're here. Keep doing the great work all of you are doing. We can't thank you enough for your service. Take care.
Thank you so much. Take care now.
I'd like to, I'd like to congratulate our, our new board members who are returning. And what we'd like to do is now we have a new board, a kind of a new board, but what we'd like to do is have all of you please stand. And I know we want to practice social distancing to have a picture to, to come up, come right this moment.
Okay.
Would you stand in place, Dr. Hanson?
Okay. Okay.
You're looking very smartly today, President Clayton Tarvin. Oh, and ealing. Oh, look at those eals. Holy stuff. There's no stuff. I want my Santa Claus showing. That was it?
Thank you.
Commemorated.
All right, so just for members of the public that are watching, what we did was we just stood in place and took a photo so that we were socially distanced. And of course, we have our masks on as usual, as per the regular practice of the Ocean View School District Board of Trustees and as well as all of our staff. And, and now we're going to move on. We are at I two. And this is board reorganization. So let me just give you a short background on this. Once a year in December, we reorganize, meaning that we choose leadership for the Board of Trustees. I want to just explain, this board does not rotate. We don't go who's next in line or anything like that. We vote based on merit. So what we do is we think about individually who we'd like to have represent us. And I have been thankful to have served this Board of Trustees as the president for this year, and I have served in three other terms. And so I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the ability to lead you. And so when we get to this reorganization, what I'm going to do as the current president is I'm going to call for a lec, an election of a new president. And then the new president will take the center seat where I'm currently sitting, and that person will then conduct an election for vice president and for clerk. We have three leadership positions on this board. We have a president, we have a vice president, and we have a clerk, and each job has specific duties. And I have been very happy to fulfill the duties of president for this year. Okay. So now, we're going to elect a new president for the Board of Trustees. So nominations are now open for board president. Are there any nominations from the board? Trustee Briscoe?
I nominate the honorable and esteemed Patricia Singer for president of the Ocean View School District of Orange County.
Okay, excellent. Are there any other nominees? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go through a roll call vote to elect trustee Singer to be the president of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote?
Aye, aye.
Trustee Singer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Souters, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell, how do you vote?
Nay.
And I will vote to support Madam Vice President, Patricia Singer, to be the next president of the Ocean View School District for the year twenty twenty-one. I am very pleased to be able to now move seats and allow President Singer to take over the meeting. And just for reference, I'm always here, President Singer, to help you, okay? All right. If you need assistance in the meeting at any time with anything literally, call upon me and I will assist you as the past president. Okay, so we're going to just do a little switcheroo here and we're going to change seats. So please be patient with us. Thank you so much, Ocean View audience.
Bang that gavel a couple times, makes sure it works.
Hey, well, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues for entrusting me with this leadership position. I hope to lead us with integrity and honesty moving forward. I will do my best to be honorable at all times, so I hope that we can collaborate together as a team and ensure that our district continues to move in the right direction. So thank you. Okay, we will now move on to the next item. Yes? We are now on item 1.21, 610, election of a vice president. Are there any nominations?
Yes. I would like to nominate trustee Jack Souters.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Clayton Tarvin?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Nay.
Okay, congratulations, Vice President.
Point of order, Madam President, you need to vote.
Of course, I support it. It is now passed. It is four to one with Norm Westwell in opposition. Congratulations, Vice President Souters.
Thank you.
We will now move to elect a board clerk. Nominations are now open for board clerk. Are there any nominations?
Any interested in it? I'll nominate Gina Clayton Tarvin.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, we will now conduct a roll call vote. Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Clayton Tarvin?
Aye.
Trustee Souters?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Nay.
Okay, and I will vote to support Gina Clayton Tarvin as our clerk. It passes four to one with trustee Westwell in opposition. Congratulations, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll point, Madam President, for our parliamentarian.
Yes.
Is the answer "I'll support" or "I" or "nay" the correct way to vote?
Would you like me to rule upon that?
Yes.
Sure. It is a matter of style. Trustee Briscoe, an "I" is, of course, customary, and you can say also "I support." And of course, if you decline to support, you can say "nay."
Thank you, just checking.
Uh huh, thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Okay, we will now move to item 1.2.2, 615, establishment of regular Board of Trustees meetings, dates for 2021. You guys can reference Exhibit F. You can find those on your agenda. Let me know when you are there. And for the public, I'd just like to read those dates. The proposed dates for the 2021 Board of Trustees meetings are January 5 and 19, January 2 and 16, March 9 and 23, April 13 and 27, May 11 and 25, June 8 and 22, July 6, August 10, September 14 and 28, October 12 and 26, November 16 and December 14.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Trustee Clayton Tarvin?
None.
Trustee Souters?
None.
Trustee Westwell?
Okay, we will now go to the vote.
Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Clayton Tarvin?
Aye.
Trustee Souters?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I will also support this. It passes five to zero unanimously. We are now on item 1.2.3, Board Representatives to Committees, District Representative to the Nominating Committee for the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. Is there anyone interested in serving as the district representative to this nominating committee? Yes, trustee Briscoe?
I would.
Okay.
I am. I will.
Anybody else? Is there anyone interested in serving as the alternate to this nominating committee? Can someone volunteer?
I will volunteer for this position.
Since there are two, trustee Briscoe is interested, and I will be the alternate, there is no need to vote. So trustee Briscoe and trustee Singer will serve as the representative and alternate, respectively, to the Nominating Committee to the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. We are now on item 1.2.4, Board Adopt a School. Board members will each select a school for the period of December 2020 to December 2021. This is an opportunity for us as trustees to attend school events and support those schools that we choose to adopt for that year. We will not ask for each trustee to choose a school one at a time, and I will begin in alphabetical order, if you can reference
Page 23.
Page 23 on your agenda. You'll see a list of the schools, and then I will go down your names, and we will begin with trustee Briscoe.
Marine View.
Okay. Clayton Tarvin. Trustee Clayton Tarvin.
How about the Oak View Preschool?
Okay. Trustee Souters?
How about Circle View?
Trustee Westwell?
How about Spring View?
And I will select Vista View. Okay, we'll go back to trustee Briscoe.
Village View.
Westmont.
Trustee Souters?
Mesa View.
Trustee Westwell? I will select College View. Trustee Briscoe?
Hope View.
Madam Clerk?
I would like to choose our brand-new school, the Virtual Academy, the TK-8. I look forward to zooming in with you folks.
Trustee Souters?
Golden View.
Didn't see it down there.
Trustee Westwell? I will do Oak View. Trustee Briscoe?
Only one left.
Star View.
Star View.
You like Star View. Star View's a good school.
I have an A.I.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, colleagues, for selecting your schools. I am sure that parents will be really happy to see you come around the community and support their individual schools. It's always a pleasure of mine to visit schools, so I know COVID has made this a little bit different for all of us, but I do look forward to visiting schools in the near future. Now we are on item J, recognition of service for the OBSD Board of Trustees Officers for December 2019, December 2020. Dr. Hanson?
It's my pleasure to pay recognition to our outgoing officers of the board, so I would like to recognize Jack Souters as our clerk. We also would like to recognize Patricia Singer as the outgoing vice president for your service this last year in preparation for your new president role. And it is my pleasure to recognize our outgoing president, Gina Clayton Tarvin. Now, Mrs. Gina Clayton Tarvin has served four terms as the president here in the Ocean View School District, and she does a remarkable job. And under her leadership, truly, Ocean View is moving in a wonderful direction, and we're so glad that she will continue for another four years on the board. And we have this wonderful plaque for you that will be updated with all of your years of service as a board president.
President Clayton Tarvin has a few remarks to make as she leaves her position. Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Hanson, for that wonderful introduction, and I have been so honored to serve the Board of Trustees and to serve you, the Ocean View community of the cities of Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley, Westminster, and the unincorporated county area of Midway City. Each of these communities is so important to us here in the Ocean View School District, and we are so happy that you're with us, that your children are attending our schools. And I just wanted to give a sort of a little brief list of all the things that we have gotten accomplished together collectively, the Board of Trustees, the executive cabinet, all of the district staff, all of our principals and school site leadership, all of our teachers, all of our classified staff, everybody that keeps everything moving. So here are some of the wonderful things that have gotten done in the year 2020. You know, we kind of think of this year as like the worst year ever, right, of our lives? But really, in the Ocean View School District, it's been pretty good. Let's hear about these things. Number one, Circle View was honored as a National Blue Ribbon School. I can tell you that is the highest honor, the greatest thing to achieve as a school staff member and a student and a parent, the National Blue Ribbon Award. Our very own Mr. Avila was honored as the California Personnel and Human Resources Administrator of the Year. Of course he was, and I was at that ceremony, and it was so great to see Mr. Avila named as the top of the top in California. We did a reopening of the refurbished Golden View Farm, and again, I want to give my colleague, trustee Briscoe, so much credit for that because it was really all his idea, but then our staff made it all happen, Dr. Hanson and Dr. Conroy and everyone else. We had the completion and the grand opening of our central kitchen. That was so exciting. That's right there on the property at the Old Rancho View School Site, which is at the corner of Beach and Warner, right where Lowe's is. And first time participating in the Ted Parade. I want to thank my colleagues that were there with me, including Vice President, well, she's now president, she was the Vice President, Singer, and others who participated in that parade. It was wonderful in Westminster. We had two distinguished school awards, Circle View and Star View. Good work, Star View and Circle View, you are amazing. We had a California Green Ribbon Schools Award to our very own Golden View for the farm program. We also had the opening of a Spanish Dual Immersion Program. That's something that I had been dreaming about since I was elected to the board in 2012, to have a program like that in the Ocean View School District. We also completed perimeter fencing at all the schools in the district to provide a single point of entry for enhanced safety and security, and of course, that was done with the passage of Measure R. So thank you, Ocean View voters and community, for supporting that important ballot measure. We also got a Golden Bell Award just recently from the California School Boards Association for the great work at Hope View with the Guide Dog Program and Holly Shogren teacher there for getting that going and keeping it going for so many years. We also had the College View Modernization and Reopening that we just did recently, and Marine View Modernization is underway, and those students are over at the interim site, the Old Sun View site. Thank you so much, Marine View families, for being so patient. You're going to just love moving into your refurbished, brand-new school when it reopens soon. And then, we continued our PAL success, that's the Partnership of Administration and Labor, with over 350 people engaged through 42 work teams. And of course, last but not least, I guess I could say the gorilla in the room, it's the COVID-19 response. We shut down. We went to distance learning. There were bumps in the road, let's be honest. We went to now hybrid learning for many of our students, over 5,000, and we have a all-virtual program as well in the Virtual Academy. The school reopening on September 9 for the special education students and September 28 for our general education students. The protection plan that was put in place, and all of the hard work by all of our employees. It's amazing. We are doing so well. We are a shining example in the state of California and in the nation, and have been focused on by media across the nation and across the world for the excellent work that our staff, our teachers, our administrators, our classified staff have done to make sure that Ocean View School District is the safest place to attend school. Thank you so much. I have enjoyed being the president of the board this year, and I look forward to the presidency of my friend and my colleague, Madam President Patricia Singer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now at K, Public Comments. Madam Clerk, will you please read the information regarding public comments?
Yes, Madam President, I will. We're now at K, Public Comments. At this time, members of the public may address the Board of Trustees regarding a matter of public interest not appearing on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board, per Education Code 35145.5 and Government Code 54954.3. No action may be taken on comments of off-agenda items unless specifically authorized by law. In order to address the Board of Trustees, members of the public may choose to do one of the following. Number one, complete the optional online comment card here at www.obsd.org-comment, no later than 3:00 p.m. for comments. Any comments submitted after 3:00 p.m. and before 4:00 p.m. will be read into the record during any other public comments to the Board of Trustees later in the meeting. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, or two. Wait outside the boardroom, the address is above, at 5:45 p.m., following social distance markings, and of course, wearing a mask until you're invited into the boardroom to make your public comments. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do. We have two. We have one in-person speaker, and it looks like it is our very own Holly Shogren. And wow, I think you're a psychic because I just mentioned your name, and I see there's someone also with you. Would you like to introduce?
Yes, this is
Yes, this is Sarah Berry, and she works at Mesa View.
Oh, hey, all right, go ahead.
Good evening, President Singer, School Board members, Dr. Hanson. My name is Holly Shogren, and I'm a teacher at Hope View. And I'm here to talk for a couple of reasons. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for your support, for your hard work during this COVID time. I just want you to know that I feel very supported by the school board, by my union and by the school district. I want to thank you so much for all the work that went into planning the hybrid program. At Hope View, our kids are so happy when they come to school. We have such a positive vibe going on. It is, it's, we just, teachers are working so hard. So on behalf of our staff, we wanted to just say thank you for your support. Thank you for all the work that has gone into this program. And at our elementary school, we think it's working, and we are happy to be at school with the kids and their learning, and it's fantastic. The second reason why I'm here is to thank you again for your years of support for Guide Dogs of America. So this is Keeper, this is our third dog at Hope View, and President Singer held Keeper when he was about 12 weeks old, and now he's 14 months old. And we have added another dog to our program. West is at Mesa View, and she's going to just say a couple of things in a minute, but we just wanted to say thank you. It has taught the kids so much about service to others, to learn to volunteer your time, to learn about the service that these dogs provide to the visually impaired, to wounded warriors, to veterans, to autistic children. Guide Dogs of America also partners with the Service Dog Group, and they provide dogs to different people. So again, we just wanted to say thank you for all the support that this school board and school district has given us. It is just fantastic to have these dogs on campus.
Mr. Avila, could you please restart the clock for the next public speaker? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am Sarah Berry from Mesa View Middle School, and I would like to first thank you so much for allowing me to bring a guide dog to school. And thank you, Holly, for paving the way because I didn't have to do much. She had done all the hard work to start, but at the middle school level, having a guide dog has been invaluable. This is really a hard time with all of the students. They're so happy to be on campus, to be with their friends, and it's still trying times, and the dog has provided amazing support for those students that are having hard days and, you know, can't function or can't do their work, and they can go sit with the dog and actually get work accomplished. I've been working hard with the Pathways Program, so it's been very invaluable. So thank you so much. I really appreciate your support with Guide Dogs of America. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. We really do appreciate the hard work and everything you're doing for this program. I've heard great things. Parents are loving it, kids are loving it, and it is true, I had the opportunity to hug that beautiful pup, and it's crazy how time has flown by. So thank you again. We appreciate all the hard work and everything you are doing to, you know, support our students with the social and emotional needs, and this really does do that. So thank you again for being here tonight.
Trustee Briscoe, do you have a question?
I have a brief question. Were either of you able to read the Smithsonian Magazine article about where dogs came from and why they're so important in our lives?
Haven't read it yet, but now I will.
It's a recent issue. It's very good. The interaction of humans and dogs creates chemical changes in the brain that are positive, measurable, quantifiable, and very good for us, and the dogs love it. I can't imagine anything more joyful as a student coming to an elementary or a middle school and having a big waggy-tailed dog out there to say good morning. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Thank you for being here.
Okay, Madam President, we have one comment that was sent in electronically, and I'll read that now.
Okay.
Okay, so this is from an anonymous commenter. We don't have a name, which is perfectly fine under California Brown Act. So it says, "As a parent, teacher, and community member in the OVSD boundaries, I would like to express my increased concern with regards to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our numbers in Orange County are increasing at an alarming rate, and our lack of ICU beds is frightening. Over the past couple of weeks, we have been receiving increased communications informing us of staff members and students who are exposed to people testing positive for COVID-19 and who are now quarantining. I urge the board to follow the lead of other districts and pivot to distance learning for two weeks following winter break to ensure the safety and staff, the safety of staff and students. If a decision to do this is made, I urge the district to apply this to all students in classrooms, including our special education classrooms, as their students and staff are at an equal risk as the rest of the school populations. Unlike the general education classrooms, these staff and students are exposed to numerous adults within the special education classrooms. I hope you make the decision to keep the health and safety of our staff and students as your number-one priority during this time." And that concludes the electronic public comments, Madam President.
Thank you. We will now move forward with L, Communications. Reading communications to the board. Superintendent, do we have any reading communications?
We have none tonight.
Thank you. L2, Board Committee Reports. Superintendent?
None.
L3, Trustees Communications. We will begin with Trustee Briscoe.
I'd like to recognize the service dog training program and the presence of service dogs in our schools. The dogs were cheerful, wonderful, happy here, and they certainly bring the same joy to our students arriving and staying at the school site during the day. So thank you, Dr. Hanson and staff, for accommodating the initial trial test run with these dogs and apparently expanding the program. Oceanview School District has been recognized for our dog program, and that's just icing on the cake. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Madam Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of things. We had some great guests this evening. I want to thank again Mr. Congressman Harley Ruda, and also thank HB PD interim chief Harvey. He's taking over, obviously, for the retiring Chief Rob Handy, and we had a nice meeting with him, with Dr. Hanson and with Madam President, and it was very informative. And I invited him back to speak to the board, and so he obliged. So it looks like we're off to a great start, having a good, open relationship and communication with our new police chief. So that is good news. I want to say that I have been honored again to serve the Oceanview community for the year 2020. It was, it's a tough year, let's be honest. You know what, though? The Oceanview School District, I'll tell you what, if anyone can do it, we can. If anyone is able to handle stress, to be able to work through a crisis or a tough situation, it's us. We've done it before. We did it again. And sometimes, the right person is there to do a certain job in a certain year. So even though I hadn't anticipated being the president during a pandemic, I guess it was kind of par for the course since, at one time, I was the president during an asbestos issue. So you know what? It's not been easy. I want to just thank the entire community for being patient with us at the Oceanview School District, hanging in. I know it can be upsetting, it can be maddening at times, it can be frustrating. Online learning can be tough. Hybrid learning can be tough. We always want things to be a little different or a little enhanced or less of this or less of that, but we are, we're doing the best we can with your input, community, and we want to continue to have your input so that we can make the proper choices for all of our children. I have been honored to visit some schools recently with our esteemed Superintendent Dr. Hanson. Thank you, Dr. Hanson, for always making it available for me to visit, the availability to, for me to visit the schools. I visited Lakeview recently, just last week. I visited Circle View, and I visited Hope View the week before. And of course, we had our grand reopening of College View, and that was so exciting. It looked so amazing over there. So thanks for all your work that you do, staff, to make these visits where we get to come in and see all the great work that you do on a daily basis. And just know that it doesn't, it's not lost upon me as a board member, all of the work that you do, staff, teachers, classified staff, principals, district administrators, everybody, to make this a smooth-running machine. Thank you again.
Thank you. Vice President Souders.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to mention before I get started was that I was out driving the other day, and I drove by Westmont, and it's just such a beautiful school from the outside, like just all the colors that are there and the, just the way they finished it, it's just, it's truly remarkable. It's just nice to look at when you go by. And I think that this board's to be commended, and as well as the staff, for all the hard work and planning that went into that. It's really something that I think makes our community a more beautiful place. I'd like to thank the trustees, especially President Clayton Tarvin, for her service, especially during these times. This has been a really, really tough year. I know we're, this is our last board meeting of the year, and it's been a kind of a tough, tough year to govern through, and this is not our day job. This is just something we do extra, and I think that all of us, and you especially, Clayton Tarvin, are to be commended for the hard work that you did. And similarly, the staff and our teachers and our classified staff and our managerial staff and the office staff, your guys' response this year to the COVID crisis has been phenomenal. I think we've done really, really well as a school district in terms of responding to it and in terms of changing our plans on a dime sometimes when we needed to in emergency board meetings, and it's just been, you know, I think it's been, I don't want to say flawless because nothing's flawless, but I think it's been pretty successful in terms of the way we've responded, and it does have something to do with the responses we've had in the past, I think. I'd also like to mention COVID virus, just really quickly to the people in general, is to just do your homework, you know, not Facebook. Don't get all your information from friends or Facebook or the internet. Go out and grab yourself some, some actual reading material and find out some of the stuff that's going on. We can, in the teaching industry, we call this a teachable moment. Take some time and learn a little bit about viruses, learn a little bit about the flu virus, about the COVID virus, learn about the, the way they interact with the human body, the way they reproduce and move throughout the world, just so you're a little bit more up to speed with what's going on and the seriousness of what's going on. It's an eye, I've been doing it lately, and it really is an eye-opening experience to look at, at some of the research that's gone into this, and, and it's, you'll be surprised at what you find, especially if you're reading, you know, reliable journal, scientific journals and other websites. You can start maybe with Johns Hopkins, they've been around for a long time doing this kind of stuff. And then finally, since we're coming close to the new year, I would like to say happy holidays and happy new year, and I welcome seeing all of you guys back here. And I would also like to congratulate the, our new president, Patricia Singer, as well as our new clerk, Gina Clayton Tarvin, thank you, and thank the board for the nomination for the election of me as Vice President. So thank you and have a happy holiday.
Thank you. Trustee Westwell.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate and welcome the new officers to the board and wish everybody within the district a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Well, I'll keep my comments short and brief. I want to say, first of all, thank you. I agree, I think this year has been a really rough year with everything that has been going on, but I am so proud of the hard work, the teachers, the staff, the administration, and this board has completed during this tough year. We've had to make really tough decisions, and we've all done it the best that we can, and we've led with integrity, and I think it shows. When I speak to parents, they, they realize we couldn't make everybody happy, but they're very happy with the fact that we've balanced the safety and the education of the students. And I think that, I keep hearing that over and over, it's not, it's not ideal, but we understand. It's not ideal, but we understand, and I think that, that speaks to the trust and the clarity that we've provided during these meetings to ensure that everybody understands where we are coming from and why we're making the tough decisions. I also want to commend Trustee Clayton Tarvin as our president. You've led this board to making those decisions, and I commend you for that because it has been a very rough year. Thank you for your strong leadership during these difficult times. But again, thank you especially to the teachers, the staff, the administration, because you've, you've carried this really, really heavy workload, and you've done it so amazingly. You rose above the challenge, and you continue to lead us and ensure that this district is strong and leading very strongly. So thank you again. I too want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays, and I hope everybody stays safe during this time, and that is all I have to say.
L4, Superintendent's Communication.
Well, congratulations to our newly re-elected board leaders, Trustee Clayton Tarvin and Trustee Westwell for another term. I want to thank Trustee Clayton Tarvin for your service as our 2020 president, and I am so looking forward to working with the newly-appointed President Singer. We are so fortunate in Oceanview to have a strong, experienced governance team. We work well together, and because of the work we do together, we're able to make Oceanview a destination school district. I do want to celebrate the reopening, the grand reopening of College View. We finally had a special ceremony, and we have a nice video that's posted on our website that you can see the beautiful school, and thank everyone that made that happen. As the holiday season is upon us, I wish to express how grateful I am to work alongside such a talented team of educators and support staff, especially during this unprecedented time in our nation's history. As everyone is aware, COVID is surging in, in our state and around our country right now. However, in Oceanview, we are doing quite well, and we continue to adhere to strict safety protocols that are outlined in our protection plan. We have a dedicated team to monitor any positive COVID cases. We coordinate regularly with the Orange County Healthcare Agency. We notify close contacts, and we communicate to staff and families in a timely manner. Our teachers and support staff continue to work both in person and virtually to deliver meaningful lessons and also balance those safety protocols. I do want to say, as I've visited classrooms this last couple of weeks, I'm impressed with the hands-on learning, the engagement, and the many traditional activities that are continuing, such as ornament-making and gingerbread man stories, all, all the same things that, that we see in a typical year. And as this week ends, we all will be ready for a well-deserved two-week break from school, and we will return to our same in-person hybrid schedule on January 4th. So thank you.
Thank you. L5, PTA, PTO, PTSA, PTSO Presidents Roundtable. Dr. Hanson, do we have a representative?
Yes, I think we're just going to wait for our people behind the scenes to bring in Kim Phatom, our current PTA, PTO Roundtable President.
Hello, can we hear me?
Yep, we can hear you and see you. Thank you.
Well, I'm Kimberly Phatom. I'm the Roundtable PTO President. I'd like to say good evening to President Singer, it did have Clayton Tarvin written here, Board of Trustees Superintendent Hanson and Cabinet. Like I said, my name is Kimberly Phatom, and I'm here to report on the President's Roundtable that was held on November 16th. We'd like to thank, at that time, President Clayton Tarvin and Superintendent Dr. Hanson for attending. That meeting, a lot of it was talked about. That was the day we found out that we moved backwards into the purple tier, so it was a lot of talk about how the schools are going to remain open following the guidance that was given. And other than that, some of the things that we talked about was that Hope View is going to have a revised Holiday House. What that meant was that the district was willing to work with the PTOs and PTAs to try to find if there were certain events that could still happen in a safe manner, and they, Hope View PTO presented a spreadsheet that said all of the different safety protocols that could happen, and because they met all those goals, I believe they were able to have their revised And because they met all those goals, I believe they were able to have their revised Holiday House. So it's just letting us all know that certain things can happen, like school photos. Some, some school sites had school photos happen already. Other than that, like I said, it was a pretty brief meeting as we reviewed the different schools, ideas and stuff. Most schools were still doing restaurant nights. Several schools throughout the district were still having their virtual book fairs. Some schools had had a bigger fundraiser. I know Circle View had a Read-a-thon that worked out pretty well. And there's a, a place called AR Workshop that's over here off of Springdale that is doing fundraisers that are kind of like restaurant nights, but for schools that were doing some like handiwork type stuff. But overall, that's about all that happened in that meeting.
Trustee, do you guys have any questions? Thank you so much for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. Thank you all the PTOs and PTAs for doing the hard work. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
L six Employee Associations Communication, CSEA and OVTA. Do we have a representative?
Yes, I think we're just waiting. Do we have OVTA present?
Just checking.
Thank you. Congratulations, newly elected President Patricia Singer, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Hanson and OVSD Cabinet. I'm Marissa Jocelyn, the OVTA President for our Teachers Association. And I just wanted to pop on to wish you all a happy holidays. Our 2020 year was definitely one for the books, but through our partnership, through collaboration and open and honest communication, we not only made it through it, we thrived and were the front runners of many of the local school districts in getting our schools back open and launching a new virtual academy. I know that as we continue this great and hard work, that 2021 is going to be even better for all of us. And so just one last time, I wish on behalf of the association, happy holidays to all of you and stay safe.
Happy holidays. Thank you. CSEA.
All right, yes. Sorry about that. I, all of a sudden, my internet kind of briefly did a little hiccup there. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you, Mr. Bozarth. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jason Bozarth and I am the chapter president of CSEA number 375. First off, on behalf of the chapter, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a hope for a safe and healthy holiday. Locally, we just finished our chapter officer elections and our E-board will now consist of the following. I will be returning as chapter president for a third term. Kathy Operud will be returning as first vice president for her third term. Elizabeth Carr will be returning as second vice president for a third term. We also have two new additions to our E-board. Brandy Knox, the Mesa School Office Clerk, will be serving as our chapter secretary for her first term. Also Sarah Bruce, the college school office clerk, will be serving her first term as our chapter treasurer. So we're both three, we're all very excited about that to both of our new E-board members. Chapter 375 offers a warm welcome and a sincere thank you for their service. Fee Tran, the Network Systems Specialist, will return for his fourth term as our communications officer. And finally, Steve Hunter will continue to offer his aid and support as past president. After the holidays, I will have several recently vacated appointments to announce. Otherwise, things are winding down. As for the state level, not surprising, much of CSEA's focus right now concerns what is happening with the pandemic. CSEA staff continue to shelter in place, but that has certainly not stopped them from providing services to our members. The association recently published a sobering video of a healthy young man, one of the members who contracted COVID. It talks about his previous disregard for the virus and the challenges he now faces after contracting it. The video itself was voluntarily made and it's a powerful message to anyone in the community who considers themselves on the fence about COVID-19's threat. And it's something that's highly recommended by our association president as viewing. On a slightly lighter note, the Dorothy Bjork Humanitarian Fund continues to assist our members in need. Recently, Amazon Smile was added as a means to donate a portion of your holiday purchases to the fund. All donations are tax deductible and go a long way to assist classified employees who have been impacted by the pandemic and the economic downturn. For those association members who may be watching, all of this information can be easily found on csea.com, just as a side note. Lastly, all of our newly elected chapter officers will be sworn in during a virtual ceremony officiated by Vend Baldapena in early January. And well, that concludes my report for the evening. So thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday break and stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays. We are now with M reports. I believe we have none tonight. Is that correct, Dr. Hanson?
Correct.
Okay. And consent calendar. I want to remind our colleagues that item N8 was pulled from the consent calendar and has been moved right after old business. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar by removal of just the N8?
Move to approve.
Second. We'll now do a little call vote. Trustee Briscoe.
Aye.
Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Vice President Souders.
Aye, aye.
Trustee Weswell. And I'm an aye. Passive aye. Oh, old business. There is none. So we will now move to N8. Human Resources, Orange County Department of Education Teacher Induction Program Memorandum of Understanding for the 2020-2021 before us for renewal. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? All second. Discussion. Trustee Briscoe.
None.
Trustee Souders.
I have a question.
I apologize. Madam Clerk, I went out of order, so I apologize for that.
Okay. Yeah. I'm rather perplexed at why my colleague, trustee Weswell, pulled this item and then did not move to approve it or second it. That's a mystery to me. How, maybe he'll just explain that in his comments. We'll see.
Trustee Souders.
I'd just like to get a little bit of background information about this item and, and what exactly it entails. I mean, I did read the description, but then also I'd like to know maybe why the district feels it has a responsibility to pay for this.
Superintendent, can you please help us, please?
Being sure that our new teachers are properly trained is essential to their success. Research shows that teachers that conduct, that have experience in a formalized induction program tend to stay in the profession longer and are more successful. And so this is offered and we used to host our own induction program here in the district with some neighboring districts and we found that it was more cost-effective to do it this way, where we contract out to have the services done.
And this amount is for two years, correct?
Is that correct, Dr. Hanson? I'm going to let Mr. Avala answer any specific questions.
This amount is for this year only, for the candidates that are participating in their induction program. So the candidates have to go through a two-year. So we have some that are in their first year and some that are in their second year.
And, and are these teachers all teachers that we are, they've been in our district for a while and we're hiring them back? They're full-time employees?
Well, these are teachers that are new to the profession, so they have to clear their credential within five years. And so they have to enter into that induction program. And so when we bring them on, if, if they're new and haven't completed their induction program, we offer that to them.
So is this a state mandated program that they have to go through?
Yes, it is, because that's in order to clear your credential, you must go through an induction program.
And if we didn't pay for it, then where would the money come from?
Well, the candidates would have to pay for it themselves or the districts pay for it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I also point out that it is a, a part of the benefits of working in the Ocean View School District. Many, many districts do pay for your induction program. So in order to be competitive, to get new teachers, it's important that we continue to pay for this program.
Trustee Weswell. I don't have any questions myself, so we will now go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe.
Aye.
Vice President, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Vice President Souders.
Aye.
Trustee Weswell. And I will support this. It passes forward to one with trustee Weswell in opposition. We are now on new business, P1 Administrative Services for 2020-2021. First interim report is before us for action. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I believe there is a presentation for us for act. Correct. I'd like to now turn it over to Dr. Conroy. Dr. Conroy, go ahead.
Madam President. Trustees, this is the first interim budget presentation. Yeah, let me share this.
Trustee Weswell.
Yes, may I get a clarification?
Sure.
We have two documents that have been presented to us. Are both of these documents the same?
Yes.
The board was given a document over the weekend and you have a full page presentation this evening. There was one page that had an edit that I will identify when we get to that page.
Thank you.
So this, these are the items that we'll cover tonight. I don't need to go into explanation of those. The interim budgets, first interim and second interim primarily based on multi-year projections. And the EB 1200 law that was passed was for school boards to have an idea and understanding of how budgets impact the district going up in second and third years. Multi-year projections are that, they're estimates only, and then based upon the information we have at the time. And when we talk about multi-year projections, it's a trend and it's based upon criteria and assumptions that I'm going to go over in just a moment. And when we start to look at the budget in each of the three years, it really focuses on the bottom line. The budget assumptions, we developed this with the LCFF that was passed a few years ago. Multi-year projections, biggest issues that we have are declining enrollment and then the unduplicated town. Also, with understanding, in 2021, we're coming up with health benefits for employees. Although it's not impacting, it is important to note that it is impacting our employees, which does impact salary and benefits that employees do have to pay out. The LCFF is contention upon enrollment fluctuations or targeted subgroups as they change. And then obviously, the economy and how it impacts, the three of those impact our base grant calculations, meaning our supplemental funds and concentration funds. In this budget year, there is no COLA for 2021 or the two outlined years at zero percent. As is shared at the budget adoption, because of the economy and the COVID impact, the monies that school districts get from the state and state aid, those monies are being deferred into the 21-22 school year. We've talked a lot about the STIRS and PURS district contributions for employee retirement. And you notice in the next two years, the 21 and 22, the STIRS goes down, but in 22-23, the STIRS contribution goes up. And in both years, the PURS contribution increases. As a matter of fact, PURS has come out and said that, that their methodology is based upon districts continuing to pay more each year. And, and the two years for 22-20, 21-22 and 22-23, it's costing the district an additional $1.1 million. So when we look at the assumptions, we have no one-time discretionary funds for 2021. Our step and column costs, 1.5% and 0.75% for the out years. We've got continued encroachment contributions. We'll be reducing transportation in 21-22, childcare preschool reductions also in 21-22. And for the first time, because of our increasing in that unduplicated students, we'll be getting concentration grants in the 21-22 and 22-23 school year. As been shared quite extensively in the media, the CARES Act funding has come to schools and these are the primary funding areas that we did get from the CARES Act. There's a learning loss mitigation fund. It's broken into three sections. There's the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds at just over $500,000. We've spent 24,000 of that. The coronavirus monies, $4.1 million, and we spent $4.1 million from primarily on personal protection equipment, clean supplies and technology. State General Fund is just over $600,000 that we spent on Chromebook carts, personal protection equipment and desk shields. And that's a total of $5.2 million. We also relieved, received back in the 1920s school year, beginning in March, the elementary, secondary school relief funds of $1.2 million. And we've spent $1 million, just over $1 million in that primarily in labor. Provide the detail of each of these with the governor relief funds gears. We spent $24,000 on desk shields. The coronavirus relief funds, CRF funds, 400, over $483,000 on with staff, teacher training and extra hours. We spent just over $2 million of protection, personal protection equipment, desk shields, custodial clean supplies, Chromebooks and technology supplies, $1.6 million in technology licenses for classroom use consultant and about $175,000 for certified transportation to pay for the cost of certified transportation. We didn't have, we don't have enough transportation for the services we had to provide because of social distancing on buses. State General Fund, we spent just over 400 State General Fund, we spent just over $418,000 on supplies, personal protection equipment, cleaning, custodial supplies and technology. And we have a contract with Centos to provide personal protection equipment at every school site, as well as supplies. And then finally, the ESER funds, we spent over $900,000 on instructional assistance and information technology extra hours in the previous school year. As you recall, when we closed down the schools, we had a lot of our instructional systems were not working. And in order to relieve the general fund and to continue paying their salaries, we used these funds, which was allowable. $137,000 in desk shields and office shields, just over $6,000 in legal fees and then indirects. So these are, these are the areas in which we use the federal CARES Act monies to support the district. As we've looked in the past to where we are now, we've talked about declining enrollment. And this chart indicates that the blue bar is our enrollment and the orange bar is the corresponding ADA, as we see from year to year. And if we look at from the current year back to the 2015-62 year, when Dr. Hans and I first came here, we have declined in enrollment almost 1,700 kids. And so that's quite significant when we look at even the size of our current schools, that it represents quite a number of students. And this has an impact when we do the calculations for the LCFF. When the LCFF is calculated using grade spans. And so you see the three grade spans, K3, 4, 6 and 7, 8. And you can see each of those grade spans is declining, and the dotted line represents the projected decline in enrollment over the next few years in our multi-year projections. Because of COVID, the state and the State Budget Act created a hold harmless for the 21-22 school year. So for 2021 and 21-22, we use the same ADA. So for this year, because we're declining enrollment, we get to use the ADA for the prior year. So for two years in a row, we'll be using the 2019-20 ADA. As we get to 22-23, you can see that then dropped rather dramatically, which will have an impact on our revenues that we have this year. And you'll see that in the slide moving forward, excuse me. So as I mentioned, we do our projections for ADA, and that would be the top part of this chart. We have the 2019-20, that was the actual ADA for last year. Because we're declining in the funding year, if you call the blue arrow, that is what we will use for the current year in 2021. And because of the hold harmless, we get to use it for two years in a row. And then you can see the significant drop down in the third year, 22-23. That is part of our funding calculation. When you look at the actual calculation for the LCFF, it takes our ADA enrollment, which is column B. We also have special ed students who are either in non-public school or the county office of education. We also get funding for those students, although we're providing those services to them at these other agencies. And you add the columns B and C, and then you multiply it by the sum of D, E, F and G. What's important to notice on this is in column E, there is no COLA. So we do not have an increase in funding over our base grants. But more significantly, column G is the first time that we're able to get supplemental funds. And the supplemental funds is the grants and add-on to each of those grade spans. And that allows us to earn a little bit more funding for our unduplicated student population. So that number down the right-hand corner, 69,156,191, that is our LCF unrestricted general fund revenues that we receive for the current year. So as I said, 96% of our revenues does come from the LCFF. Our expenditures, 90% of our expenditures is on personnel. We have our employee benefits, classified salaries and certificated salaries, and that adds up to approximately 90%. And as I've shared in the past, our percentage of personnel related expenses continue to increase. If you could look back to the 2017-18 school year, as a percentage of all of our expenditures, our personnel-related expenses are increasing, 89, 90, 92% in the last three years. And currently, as projected at first interim, we're looking at 90%. We've talked about our reserves, we've talked about our board policy for a reserve that would be equal to two months of expenditures, or about 17%. This is through the first five months, it averages about $5.4 million. But understanding, when you look at our salary and our benefits, it equals 78%. And you say, well, that doesn't equal 90%. But realizing that two of these five months is July and August, where the majority of our staff are not at work yet. When we look at an average cost per month, we're looking at about $5.8 million just in salaries. That takes us up to over $7 million. And when we look back in the consent calendar, when we look at payroll expenses, you can see that $5.8 million identified there. So this is looking at our revenues and expenditures. And we frequently talk about, we don't have enough money. It's not a money issue that we have, it's an expense problem that we have. We spend more than what we bring in. And if you look at this, this shows our unrestricted revenues and our unrestricted expenditures, we have a surplus. But then there's more to the story, and that's what I'm gonna get into now. So when we look at our encroachment for, at first interim, we've got almost $14 million in encroachment that we contribute to programs that don't support themselves. Almost $11 million in special education. Routine restricted maintenance is an ed code requirement. Because we do participate in the state bond program with state matching monies to the monies that we spend for modernization construction, we're required to contribute 3% of our general fund expenditures to routine restricted maintenance. We have the summer, classified summer employee assistance program. That is the one-for-one dollar that the state matches a classified employee that puts aside in savings for a summer bonus check, so to speak. And the district is, we pay the statutory payroll benefits, and that's what that $28,000 is. The last two items there, those are grant programs that we receive, that the salaries and the benefits are now exceeding the grant. And so that then falls to the general fund. We also have contributions to other funds. From the routine restricted maintenance, we contribute $250,000 to the deferred maintenance program so that we have monies for facility repairs without the district. And in the current year, right now, we're projecting $1.4 million that the general fund will contribute to childcare and preschool programs. So if we go back to our revenues and expenditures, when we look at our revenues across the board, you see that 21, 2021, 21-22, it's relatively flat. That has to do with the hold harmless. But when we get to the 22-23 school year, we see a six, almost a 6% decrease in revenues. Now we go back to our encroachment and our contributions. So when you take those monies and deduct it from the revenues, you see our net revenues then dropped by $15 million in 2021. That gives us $56.5 million with expenditures of $60 million. And there is our deficit of $4 million. Our unrestricted, or excuse me, our encroachment contributions represents 21% of our unrestricted revenues. So if you look at that, one-fifth, 20% of our revenues right away go to contribute. So now we're operating the district on 80% of our revenues. And so there's where you see the imbalance. The deficit then is taken from the beginning fund balance. So $15.6 million is reduced by the $4 million decrease to $11 million, which then becomes the beginning fund balance of the following year, and we do that again in the third year. What's interesting, rather, it's not interesting, it's our problem, it's our structural deficit problem. In the 22-23 school year, not only do we have the deficit and the reduction of revenues, we're $6.7 million deficit. And that creates a challenge for us as we move forward. The positive part of this is that our ending fund balance is positive. We have enough in our ending fund balance to present a balanced budget. Yes, we do have deficit spending, but we do have a positive budget. So when we look at our budget, and we compared the three years of the multi-year, and we look at our ending fund balance, the blue bar represents the beginning fund balance. We talked about just now the $4 million deficit in the 2021 school year. That's the $4 million that creates the difference between the blue bar and the gold bar. That difference is the $4 million. The green bar is our available reserves. As we go through each year, and we see the beginning fund balance decreases, and so does our available reserves, to the point in the third year, we just have under $250,000 available in our emergency reserve. So if something were to happen in the current year or any of the out-years based upon today's budget, we would be challenged, because we only have $250,000 available to still meet our obligations financially for a balanced budget. One of the things that we've done administratively last year was creating a priority of expenditures at three levels. And shared this with the board at budget adoption last year, essential, necessary and discretionary. And we, fiscal services and purchasing are reviewing all the purchases that come in, requiring every purchase requisition to label whether it's essential, necessary or discretionary. And if they come in discretionary, they're sending it back to the school sites or the departments, because it doesn't meet our threshold. And this will be something that will be bringing to the board in the future to be included and updated in some of our board policies. So as I mentioned before, that we have five budget challenges. I've shared the declining enrollment. We've lost almost 1,700 kids in the six years that we've been here. We have low school enrollments. When we look at our enrollments by school, we have 10 elementary schools with a total enrollment of almost 4,700 kids in elementary school. And the average of that is 470 students as an average elementary school site. Our middle schools, we have just over 2,600 kids. For elementary, for middle schools, the average middle school enrollment is 660. Well, essentially, that's three schools that make up that 1,700 enrollment loss. And that contributes to our low school enrollments. I've already shared that our encroachment contributions from the general fund represents 21% of our unrestricted revenues. Our personnel costs are still high at 90%, and this is at first interim. And as we get further in the year, whether that increases or not based upon the funding. And we know the impact that COVID has had, and even though that the first round of the CARES Act has helped, that's been primarily addressed to assist us with addressing COVID. We hope that we get some more funding in the new year, but these impact us greatly. These are issues that we have to address in the future if we're going to continue to discuss the viability of our financial solvency as a district. In November, the Legislative Analyst Office always puts out a report on the condition of this projected upcoming budget year. And they have reported that the economy has improved, it's uneven, but it is improving. And they have estimated, projected that there's $13.7 billion in one-time monies and $4.2 billion in ongoing monies in Prop 98 that is available for schools in the 21-22 school year. And that's because of what was projected when COVID hit and the changes in June, that this was the first time this has ever occurred, so there was no model on which to budget. And because the economy has improved, this is, these monies are available for the next budget year. The state is saying that their revenues are only increasing by 1% under the current law, but the expenditures are growing at 4.4%. So that creates some challenges in terms of how Prop 98 will be calculated into the future. So this graph here represents, or shows that there's the deficit of the general fund for the state with the one-time. They call the windfall, it's a surplus for the current year moving forward, and how it will be spent. The Legislative Analyst Office, they're recommending that the state focus on restoring the state budget and then using one-time funds to really address the economic and the healthcare agencies industry throughout the state to help them bounce back from this pandemic. But there is enough money in the projected Prop 98 funds to pay back all the deferrals at the end of this current year. There's enough to cover the statutory COLA in 21-22. There's enough monies to protect Prop 98 should it drop in the future. And there's enough money in the one-time and ongoing monies to address school, addressing issues such as student loss, student learning loss, paying down future pension costs, because we see those as increasing, and that's a major drain on school district budgets, and again, building reserves. So as we look at our next steps, tonight, you'll be asked to approve the first interim budget. It is a positive certification. Yes, we are deficit spending, we have a structural problem that we do have to address, and that would be future conversation. But this budget does present a positive certification and meets the requirements for AB 1200. And as your chief business official, I would highly request that we do pass this as a positive certification. In January, the Governor's Budget Proposal will come out, we'll be attending that to see the impact on the next year's budget. And from January to March, we'll be working on second interim. We'll be working on the development of the next year's budget assumptions, as well as begin enrollment and staffing projections for the 21-22 school year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Conroy. We will now go to discussion or questions. Trustee Briscoe.
I heard you say there is no statutory COLA this year or next year. The Prop 13 rules and regulations require a COLA to be generated based on the Department of Commerce Inflation Deflator Index for Public Agencies. Are you saying that there was no inflation based on that index, or the state arbitrarily said there will be no COLA?
There is a COLA, it is not funded. It was part of the cuts at budget adoption by the state, the state did not fund the COLA for schools.
So then it goes to a deferral under Prop 98 that we should get back, is that correct?
When monies at the state level increase, we should get that back.
Is there anything in the deferral process that requires the money payback be accorded to the underlying school districts as it was stolen? Or can they spend it all in LA Unified, claim they gave the money back, all the public schools, just not to the outlying suburban districts?
The monies that are deferred out of the current school year are slated to be repaid in the next school year. And there's a payment schedule that's already been established by month. And that in the 21-22 school year, we would recoup those monies. When we get a deferral, the state requires us to book the monies as received. But it will be an IOU, and we'll receive that in the next school year. So we book it, they take the cash, and they balance the state budget.
So eventually, at some point, we get all of our money back to us. It's not taken by other school districts in a larger amorphous bucket of, well, we gave it to the school districts. I thought it was given back to whoever they wanted to give it to as opposed to. Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you. I have one question about page eight.
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at the Governor's Emergency Education Relief or GEAR.
Yes.
It says that we received $531,313. And it shows an expenditure of $24,000, or that we've used, $24,484. Am I reading that correctly?
Technically correct. We have not received the year monies. We will be receiving 25% this month, and then in the new year, as we get, as we expend it, we will get reimbursed for the expenditures on a quarterly basis.
So I guess that's why the number is so low, because you're not apt to spend money that you don't have. Is that accurate?
Correct. The biggest issue with the Learning Loss Mitigation Funds was really the coronavirus relief, which had to be, has to be spent by December 30th. So the focus was really balancing the cash flow of these different funds to make sure that we met the expenditure requirement, but also met the needs of the district with these different areas that we've addressed.
Okay, I just want to say, in closing, I don't really have too many questions, that was really it. That was really it. I just want to say you've done a tremendous job. You have taken the money that we have received and used it appropriately. You have done heroic work, really. Because the COVID relief has been, it was earmarked, and it was spent within the timeframe that it had to be. And on items that frankly are critical to having schools open in person, like things like PPE that you have here, cleaning supplies, the desk shields in particular. And you know what? That's given our employees the feeling and the reassurance to be able to come to work in person, those that are coming to work in person, and not having employees being scared. Actually, as we were sitting here, something flashed up on my phone from Fox 11 News saying that the teachers in the Huntington Beach Union High School District are being forced back to work after the vacation because apparently they didn't utilize their CARES Act funds properly. Oh goodness, how awful. Well, that didn't happen in the Oceanview School District because of your work, Dr. Conroy. So I thank you. Excellent. And this budget looks like it's in order. And I think we're ready to go.
I'd like, I'd like to acknowledge, if you notice on the cover page of the budget presentation, Keith Farrell, Director of Fiscal Services, Jose Velazquez, who is a accountant, and Terry Bonds, our financial analyst, have put countless hours into preparing this document as well as our purchasing department led by Jody Johansik, who has dealt with all of these, how to deal with all the supplies. But also our Ed Services Division with Dr. Hofer and Kristy Hickman, who have helped, were part of this in terms of the next, but agenda item, the Learning Continuity Plan where it was in part of the LCFF Budget Overview for Parents. And as well as Mr. Avila, because of the tracking of COVID and just all the work that we've done in cabinet led by Dr. Hanson, that this has really been a team approach, not just a single person. So I do want to acknowledge all the different people who've been involved in putting not only the COVID monies to, to good use, but as well as development of the first interim budget.
Of course, Dr. Conroy. And I appreciate you giving me the breakdown and the detail on who was involved. And I know there's probably even more, you know, more of our great employees beyond that that were involved. So thank you. And, and of course, you're always a person that is very gracious. And of course, it's not a one-person effort. But I do appreciate all of the work, everybody that's presented here and that you had mentioned. So thank you to the entire Oceanview School District team. It is truly a team approach. And you know what? You make it easy for us to make the decisions here. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Souders?
Yes. First, Dr. Conroy, I'd like to thank you and your team for putting this budget together. You guys did a fantastic job as usual. Easily understood. I want to thank you for the, the presentation, too. You always answer a lot of my questions as we're going through it. I just had a couple that you sort of hinted at. And I am always interested in like next steps and direction that we're going in. So when we were talking about personnel-related expenditures being 90% of our, of our, of our operational budget. And I know you've mentioned this in the past, that that's a high number in comparison to other districts or some other districts. What are we shooting for? Like what percentage are we shooting for? If we're at 90, where are we trying to get to?
Ideally, we want to target around 85%.
85%. And, and the other thing that I heard hinted at throughout this, I mean, obviously, if the personnel costs are at 90% and we are trying to get to 85%, that is going to happen in two ways. That's either attrition or layoffs usually, or something gets cut. So I guess results in layoffs. So other than that, how are we getting there?
Well, I think the, the important slide is to look at, at slide, So when you look at our, our challenges, this I would hope would not be something new that you haven't seen before. And it, it, I'm, I'm pleased that you're asking questions about because that's something that we have to have future conversations.
And I know they're hard conversations to have.
Yes, they are.
And I also noticed that you mentioned that we'd lost 1,700 students and that that was three schools. And yet those three.
On average, yes.
And those three schools are still operating.
Well, it's just that the numbers represent our, what our current average school size currently is.
Right. But I mean, we could take the students that we have and put them in. I'm not saying we're doing this public, so don't freak out right now. But I'm just saying theoretically.
Theoretically, yes. And that's, that is a separate conversation that we'd have to, you know, probably have a board study session and to talk about enrollment and direction and things like that. But we need to have the board provide that direction.
And I think it's important that the board at least is aware that this might be an option or a consequence in the future moving forward. Because that number, what was it?
Almost.
Of the emergency funds at the end there is a scary number. It's scary low.
Yes.
And is, are we even, aren't we mandated by the state to keep more than that in our emergency funds? Or did they waive that?
No, the, I think what you're referring to is a cap on reserves, which depending on what happens in the next budget cycle at the state, may trigger that, that in 2223, we will, they will institute that cap. And that's usually in the budget year.
Okay.
And that would be capping it at, I believe, at 6%. And where we know we're above that right now. And our board policy currently states that we should have 17% or equivalent of two months expenditures. I believe our reserve for the current year is about 15%.
Okay. That's actually healthier than I thought, so. Okay. Oh, and then my last question was, I think it's worth noting anyways, when we talk about encroachment on the district funds, and I know we kind of go past this quickly, but the special education encroachment is the largest encroachment on, on our district, correct? At $10 million?
That's correct. It's the largest encroachment in every school district's budget.
In, in the state of California in reality, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one last thing, I'm sorry. Does that encroachment in special education, does that include the litigation expenses we have?
It would be anything that's charged to special ed.
Okay. And litigation and lawyer's fees and things like that would fall into that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Westwell.
Which of these two documents is accurate? You said you were going to mention the page that was different.
Yes, I will take you back to the page, excuse me. So if you look on P, on slide 15 from the original presentation that you got on Friday, which was the two page, two slides per page to this one.
Okay.
If you look at columns B and C, I clarified the makeup of.
Wait a minute. Is this page, page 15?
No, you would.
This is the original here.
No, that, what you have there is two slides per page. So I'm not sure what.
Page eight of your package.
Page eight. This one.
Yes, the top one.
Okay. That's what's different on here about what's on the one you used tonight?
So I would look on column B and B and C.
B, B and C.
So on the presentation I'm showing you tonight is, I inserted column C, which is not in the one that you're looking at with the two slides.
Sure, see, I can throw this away?
You can throw that away.
Thank you. No further questions?
I don't have a lot of questions other than I want to say thank you so much for your presentation. And you are right, we've heard you discuss these issues consistently throughout the year. We have some hard work and hard decisions to make. But this budget obviously is the, the reality of what we're dealing with. So it is something that we as a board have to discuss further and come back to figure out how we're going to make some of these reductions that clearly we have to do in the near future to ensure that we have a balanced budget and that we are not in the red in the near future. So thank you so much for presenting this. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you to your team, yourself for this great presentation. And it is, it is true. It is very clear and easy to understand for the public who is interested in looking at these numbers. It also creates, you know, transparency to see how we spend this money when it came to PPE shields and everything we did for the classroom. So thank you so much for doing it and outlining it so clear. I don't really have any other questions. Yes, Trustee Westwell?
I do. For four years, I've heard that we need to have this tough discussion in the future. When does the future arrive? When are we going to have this discussion? Because I've been here four years now with this looming problem. And it's always going to be in the future. We're going to talk about it in the future.
Trustee Westwell?
Do we have a definitive date that we think that the future might actually occur? We can start talking about this?
Madam President, part of parliamentary procedure. Are the comments addressed to the audience or to the chair?
I'm not sure, but I would like them to be addressed to the chair, please.
I'm addressing the chair. I'd like our deputy superintendent to answer.
There is no need for an answer. When it is time to discuss it, it will be agendas, and we will discuss those future things. Thank you.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Okay, moving on. We will move on to P2 Administrative Services Local Control Funding Formula, LCFM. Yes.
We need to vote on the last item?
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. You are right. We will now go to vote. Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Nay.
And I am an aye. It passes four to one with Trustee Westwell in opposition. Thank you, Vice President.
Welcome.
P2 Administrative Services Local Control Funding Formula, LCFM, Budget Overview for Parents, is, for Parents, it's before, for action. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Vice President Souders?
No ma'am.
Trustee Westwell? I have no comments either. We will then go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Nay.
And I'm an aye. It passes four to one with Trustee Westwell in opposition. P3 Administrative Services Contract Change Orders for Various Contractors for the Marine View Modernization Project. An interim campus locker room addition is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
When we crowd our locker rooms, there are not enough lockers in the school sites for the students to use. I want to compliment our superintendent on making sure the locker rooms are used to statutory maximum occupant load. I'd like to draw the attention of the chair to problems we've had in the past of site administration, site staff failing to enforce securing students' cell phones and wallets in the locked locker that we provide for them. So along with all of this, we should keep in mind or renew a direction to site staff that they make the kids put their stuff in the locker and lock it up. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Briscoe. Madam Clerk?
I have no debate at this time.
Vice President Souders?
No questions, thank you.
Trustee Westwell?
No questions.
Okay, we will move to vote. Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote? Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Nay.
And I'm an aye. It passes four to one with Trustee Westwell in opposition. P4 Administrative Services Contract Change Orders for Various Contractors for the College View Elementary School Modernization Project, number 17-300, is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion face, Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
None.
Vice President Souders?
None.
Trustee Westwell?
None.
And I have no comments. Okay, we'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes five to zero unanimously. P5 Administrative Services File Notice of Completion for Various Contractors for the College View Elementary School Modernization Project, number 17-300, is before us for action. Is there an?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, thank you. Discussion face, Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
None.
Vice President?
No discussion.
Trustee Westwell?
No question.
And I have no comments either. We'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes five to zero unanimously. P6 Administrative Services Resolution Number 142021, Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Oceanview School District of Orange County, relating to information made available to the public in the form of statutory school facility fees, reportable fees, report, reportable fees, report, including alternative school facility fees for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and making related findings thereon in compliance with Government Code Section 66006 and 66001 is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Vice President Souders?
No ma'am.
Trustee Westwell?
No questions.
And I have no comments. We'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes five to zero unanimously. P7 Administrative Services Resolution Number 152021, Delegation of Authority Effective January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, is before us for action. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Vice President?
No ma'am.
Trustee Westwell? I have no discussion either. We will go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Nay.
And I'm an aye. It passes four to one with Trustee Westwell in opposition. P8 Educational Services Agreements for Non-Public Agency Services for Special Education Students as Determined by Individualized Education Programs, IEPs, is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Souders, it's a aye. So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Vice President Souders?
None.
Trustee Westwell? I have no discussion as well. We'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes five to zero unanimously. P9 Educational Services Amendments to Agreements for Non-Public School Services for Special Education Students as Determined by Individualized Education Programs, IEPs, is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion face, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Vice President Souders?
No discussion.
Trustee Westwell?
No.
And I have no discussion. And we'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes five to zero unanimously. P10 Educational Services Comprehensive School Safety Plans for the 2020-2021 School Year is before us for action. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, I just want to say, I appreciate Dr. Hanson getting those to us ahead of time, or she did to me anyway, on a flash drive. I was able to review the safety plans, and I just want to say that they were well put together and so on. And I have to say, as a school employee in another school district, we, we end up, teachers end up having to participate and to create the safety plans. And so it's a team effort, yet again, in Ocean View. And so, good job. Looked great. I support them.
Thank you. Vice President Souders?
No discussion.
Trustee Westwell?
No.
And I have no comments either. And we'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes five to zero unanimously. P11 Educational Services Independent Contractor Agreement between Ocean View School District of Orange County and Greg Gilher for Art Instruction for the 2020-2021 School Year is before us for action. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion face, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, I just want to say, I approve of this agenda item. I, I like it. I think that it's imperative to have our children involved in arts education and anything that we can do to provide them with, you know, beyond the basic core curriculum is just wonderful, so, great.
Thank you. Vice President Souders?
Yeah, I would echo that, that sentiment. I think that it's important that we have art education in schools, paramount to all of the other types of education we do, and try to integrate it as much as we can. I do have one question, however. It does say not to exceed $4,000 being paid out of Title I site funds. I understand the funding and all of that. My question is, it says, it's, it's a, well, in the, in the rationale, it talks about it being a, where is it? An engagement night, a family engagement night event, and interactive visual arts lessons. And then it says, future dates and times to be decided for 38-week follow-up art lessons, providing engagement, yada, yada, yada. Does that $4,000 include those follow-up times?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Westwell? I also want to echo the comments from my colleagues. I think anything that we can do to increase the arts and music to our kids is essential, and I'm happy to see that this is happening. So thank you for bringing this before us. We will now go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
No.
And I'm an aye. It passes four to one unanimously, sorry, four to one with trustee Westwell in opposition. P12 Educational Services Memorandum of Understanding Between the Orange County Department of Education and Ocean View School District of Orange County for Mental Health Education Services Act, MHSSA, Partnership is Before Us for Action. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion face, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, so important, especially during this time of a global pandemic, and understanding that many of our students frankly are suffering from emotional upset and so on, that has been brought upon them by an act of nature, a virus that has had us all sequestering at home and quarantining and so on, whatever the terms are used. We're at home, and it's hard for children, even if they're in the hybrid program and coming to school part-time. So I fully support any and all mental health services that can be provided by the Ocean View School District, by the County of Orange, the state of California, or our federal government in any way, shape, or form. This is very needed and very welcomed by me. Thank you.
Vice President Souders?
No comments.
Trustee Westwell? We will go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
No.
And I'm an aye. It passes four to one with trustee Westwell in opposition. P13 Human Resources Independent Contractor Agreement Goodwill Industries of Orange County's Death and Elite Professional Interpreting Services is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion face, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Vice President Souders?
No discussion.
Trustee Westwell?
None.
And I have no discussion. We'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President Souders?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes five to zero unanimously. Q Any Other Public Communications to the Board of Trustees? Madam Clerk?
We do not have any other communications to the board at this time.
Thank you. Our future agenda items is requested by board members. Trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No, thank you.
Vice President Souders?
You don't have enough to do right now?
Apparently not.
None.
Trustee Westwell?
Well, I'd like to talk about our budget and the structural imbalances that we have in the future. So I would like to see us discuss that at the earliest opportunity rather than later.
Thank you, trustee Westwell. We'll take that in consideration. And I don't have any future agenda items. We will now go to Board of Trustees Roundtable. Trustee Briscoe?
Well, lots to share. I'd like to highlight Tartan Tarvin in her new clerk role. I've never seen you in tartans before. Is it a family tartan, Madam President?
I'm Madam Clerk now.
Well, I was asking the president, because I address all my comments as Madam President. Anyway, that being said, I was able to watch a hybrid, a distance learning class with Dr. Hanson, and two big observations, two or three hours of that would be beyond a snooze fest, especially for little guys aged first grade to fourth grade. The teacher worked hard, and, and that was the second observation, is that it's a lot of work to teach that way. Thank you, Vice President Souders. Teaching, it's, it's just not the same as teaching in front of a class. And you have to go back and redo all new lessons, a lot of work. A second thing is, I would like our administration to inform us, when they talk about our school district performance, to inform us what the body count is in the grade cohort from the demographic study at all times, so we can keep an eye on what's called the public school participation level. So it's one thing to go boo hoo hoo, we have declining enrollment, but the big question is, do we really have 1,700 fewer boys and girls living in our district? Or do we have 1,700 boys and girls going to other schools, charter schools, of which it appears there's four or 500 children homeschooling out of charter schools far and away, and other schools? And this, the information as it's presented doesn't give us a handle on what's actually happening to drive the numbers. The, the, the third thing is the clock. I'd like to have that clock back where it was on that wall, and it's missing. I'd appreciate it. It gives me a chance to look at it. My cellphone dies at the meetings, and it died again tonight, so I don't have access to timing. Oh, it's 8:01 on the computer screen, anyway. Last is the safety plans, and I appreciate getting the safety plans in person. I had other superintendents who prevaricated, that means they lied and cheated and didn't produce plans at all. One year, I busted out and made the state of California come down on my own district and produce safety plans. So thank you for producing safety plans, good safety plans, safety is important. They're created at the behest of California state law, and they're created through the school site council and by vote approved by those great volunteers. That concludes my comments, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to reiterate what I had said earlier about the fact that we, I think that our staff has done a phenomenal job to get our schools reopened, even if it's only two days a week at this point, in the cohorts A and B. It was a monumental undertaking, and Ocean View School District has done this, it seemed like with great ease, but believe me, behind the scenes, our staff did all the heavy lifting. I want to thank Dr. Hanson and her executive cabinet, which includes Dr. Conroy, our deputy superintendent, Mr. Felix Avila, who is our assistant superintendent of human resources, and our assistant superintendent of educational services, Dr. Julian Hofer, and of course, all of the managers that are here at the district office and at the school sites, those would be the principals, our teaching unit, who's really in the classroom with the kids, doing what they need to do. I'll tell you what, the Ocean View teachers, they're troopers. You know, no complaining, always doing right by the children, right by the community. They just said, let's go, let's do this. What heroes, honestly, what heroes. And our classified staff, many who are in the classroom too, helping out, heroes as well. And our classified staff here at the district, and at the central kitchen, and at the district yard over by Lowe's, we just have the best employees in the nation. I will say that with 100% assuredness. The best, you are the best, Ocean View. You're the best employees we could ever ask for. Thank you. Thank you for putting your own time into everything you do, even above and beyond your working hours and your contract hours. Thank you for believing in us and the plan that we put together, and all of the safety precautions we put in place and mitigations we put in place to make you feel safe, to be at work.